Good evening. I would like to call a September 25th, 2017 Belbrook City Council meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. McGill?
Here.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here. Formal approval of the City Council regular meeting minutes of September 11th, 2017. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular City Council meeting minutes?
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements, special guests, we have a few this evening. I'd first like to start, before we came in this evening, we had a very productive meeting with both the school district, the Shore Creek Township trustees, and the park districts. We try to get together once every three, four months, and it's a great way to exchange ideas. So, the parking lot was probably full when you came in, it's definitely full tonight, because we had a couple things to do. So, it was a good meeting, and we all have been working very well together. Moving on, special guests, I'd like to introduce, let's see, yes, Chief Nythard, would you please come up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This here is to, I'm here to provide and give certifications for some members of the community that went above and beyond, so I'd like to call it more of a celebration of what they did, not necessarily an award for what they did. To give you some background, on September the 4th, 2017, at 7:20 PM, our Belbrook Medic 22 was dispatched to a local restaurant for a six-week-old not breathing. Lieutenant Glucker and firefighter Crawford arrived in four minutes to find bystander care being administered to a six-week-old who was unresponsive and not breathing. Those two individuals are here tonight, Mary Caldwell and Kristy Banford, and those two serve as an example of, at times, you have to get involved. It would've been easy for them to stay at dinner, because this was their local restaurant, and continue their meal. They're both nurses, but at the same time, they had no legal responsibility to do that. They're trained as nurses, but obviously, they embody the spirit of nursing, which is to help others. A couple of things that maybe people don't know is, kids in calls are very stressful. No matter how many years you've been in our business, we don't get many kids, and there's the whole emotional aspect of treating and caring for little ones, especially infants. So, it was a very emotional call to begin with for our own crews. A couple takeaways that I got out of this, beyond the fact that they provided this assistance, our crews did a great job, and it was a successful outcome, is I would encourage everybody to take CPR, because you never know when you're that person at the restaurant who might be needed. So, please, find a place to get CPR and get trained, so that you can act and intervene in an emergency and make a positive difference. The second thing that I'd like to take away, for all of, everybody to take away, is that they did get up and help somebody, and I think that's very important. And when you have an opportunity to help somebody, maybe it's not a life-saving thing, maybe it's just helping them with their groceries, maybe it's complimenting them on what they're wearing, or saying hi and giving them a smile. That's helping in many ways, pay it forward kind of attitude. So, it's my pleasure, and it's my honor, to have Kristy and Mary come up tonight and accept these certificates and awards for stepping in when they didn't have to.
It's quite impressive. I know actually getting up and taking action is something I think all of us would have a challenge to do, to do that, and being in a small community like that, it means a lot. So, thank you very much for getting up and potentially saving a human life, it's really impressive, so thank you very much.
I know my daughter and her fiance was at the restaurant, they witnessed it, and they were just astonished at how quickly and how well it worked out, and everybody was just, you know, quiet, and it just went, and it came out real good. Thank you very much.
Any other comments on council?
Thanks a lot, it's a nice thing to do.
I would say, Mr. Mayor, that the community is blessed to have individuals that think of others and act for others, so kudos to you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, once again, it really is a heroic thing, and we all sit here and think, would you be able to do that or not? And I'm not sure I could answer that, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on this evening, we do have beautification awards for 2017. Bronn, Bronn has done this for many years, her and her committee, so Bronn, thank you very much. Once again, it's always great to see all these nice rocks up here, and all the residents who've done such a fine job taking care of their yards.
Thank you, Mayor. I enjoy giving, being part of the committee, and being part of the presentational award, and meeting the people, and seeing all the beautiful homes in Belbrook. And so, without further ado, I can go ahead and announce the winners. The city is divided into five sections, and then we also have a business category. And so, Section A, the first recipients are Dale and Joyce Conley, they live at 2256 Tampico Trail, whoops, nope, I skipped ahead, never mind, go back, I'm sorry, businesses are first. The first winner for the businesses is the Brookview Swim Club. And the Brookview Swim Club is a privately-owned club, I believe, and I spoke to the manager, Rusty Cross, and he really gave Sophia all the credit for planting the flowers. She is, I think she has the head coach for the swim team, and then she does this with her own time and her own money, and she really does a great job. The Brookview Swim Club is a beautiful place, and I think people really enjoy everything that she's done there. So, is Sophia here tonight? Oh, come on up, come on up. And when you, and when I call your name, if you would come up, you can pick a rock, or you can point to it, or you can have that guy with you carry one of his.
I'm handy sometimes.
You're welcome, nice to meet you, and congratulations, and thanks for all your hard work that you do. And then the second recipient for the businesses is, it's the property on South Main Street, it's 22 South Main and also 24 South Main. Now, John Dorn is the property owners, and there's two different businesses. State Farm Agency Fed Camp is the manager of that, and Katie Vance is the owner of the 40B Design, and just really immaculately clean properties in Belbrook, and, you know, bringing some business back down to Belbrook. So, they do a great job, and it's really, it's very attractive, it really is. So, I don't know if John is here?
John's not.
John's not.
Okay, you are, okay, you're Mr. Camp, right?
Right.
Okay, well, thank you for coming, and you get to pick out the rock, so come on up. And I did speak to you.
Yes, you're welcome.
You guys can take turns, I guess, having it at both places. Well, you are closer to the front, so that makes sense. Okay, now we'll do the residents, I'm sorry. And so, we go back to Section A, and Dale and Joyce Conley at 2256 Tampico Trail are the winners, are they here tonight? Nope, not here, okay. Really interesting property, it has a lot of tropical feel to it, and this is, I think, their second time to receive their award, and I will drop off the rock to them at a later date. And then, the second recipients are Josh and Daniel Gross, and what they've done to this piece of property is nothing short of amazing. They, I mean, totally flipped this house, it was, I would say it was condemnable. It's on 2139 South Lichten Drive, and are you, are they here?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, there they are, come on up, Josh and Danielle. I mean, it's just, it's just phenomenal, it really is, phenomenal job that they did, and it's beautiful.
And they're also the second-generation award winners.
Yes.
I wish you'd get, congratulations, guys. And, and they're, Josh's mom is on the committee, but she had nothing to do with picking the house. It really is just, it's, it looks like something you'd see on one of the House and Garden channels, what they've done, it really is just a remarkable thing. And hopefully, they're inspiring everybody else to do it. Okay, and then Area B, first one is Jim and Melissa Jordan, and they're at 2094 Rose Crest. Are you guys here tonight? Yeah, come on up. And they're second-time recipients, too, and they really have neat properties, lots of fun color and planning, and nice to see you again, nice to meet you. And I don't think they got a rock the first time they won, so, what are we gonna come up with next, Mark?
Yeah, I don't know. That was my one idea, so.
And I love it, everybody loves it. Past winners want a rock. And then, and also in Area B are Bill and Ruth Peatley, and they're at 2345 Portage Path. Come on up, guys, and they have a beautiful home, they really do. Right in front of the creek, and it's shaded, and it's just really some neat things in their garden. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again. I'll just pick them up.
Might be heavy.
I like it when I go back by the winners' houses and I see the rocks outside, I think that's really neat. And then in Area C, we had three winners, there was actually a tie in Area C, so we have, the first one is Ken and Anna Nysley, and they're at 4240 White Strive. And she may be laugh hard when I, she got the award, nice to see you again. Beautiful home, and you can pick out a good rock. And then, the second home is Scott and Suzette Hopkins, and they are at 4227 Woodacre Drive. Are you guys here tonight? And I'm really surprised this house has never won before, because it's really a nicely-maintained home, and always looks good, anytime of the year. And then, the third are Randy and Debbie Dur, and they're at 4068 Glenberry Court. Are you, yeah, she's here. Thought you looked familiar. And they were doing some construction, and so you got that all done, and nice to see you again. It looks nice. Neat contrasted coloring. I'm gonna take a little one, I haven't had one. You're welcome, thank you. And then in Area D, we have Phil and Tammy Harris, and they're at 117 Bel Air Circle. Are they, Harris is here tonight? We'll drop the rock off to them. And then we have Area E, and Jim and Cindy Sharp at 3930 Northfield Drive. And I think, are you guys, okay, all right, nice to see you again. Nice to see you. Oh, you're very welcome. My pleasure. Everybody's shying away from that really big, the really big rock. Okay, and then the last one is Everett and Lynn Otters, I think is how you pronounce it, and they are at 4001 Sable Ridge Drive. Are you guys here tonight? Nope, and they are also second-time recipients, I believe, it's a beautiful place. They're getting a big rock. All right, and that's it for 2017, so, oh, no, it's not, we need to, these are the rules, basically, when I went over, five sections, the homes are aesthetically pleasing to the eye, they have to have a visible house number, and a good standard repair, no peeling paint, or, you know, just, the ones that win, they stand out, they really do. You can tell that people really maintain their homes. And then, you can only win once every five years, that's the other thing. I think that's just about it. And the committee members this year, myself, Debbie Gross, Diane Harris, Bonnie Howe, Michelle Johnson, Betty Augrod, and Pat Robinson. So, that's it for this 2017. If you have noticed someone that you'd like to nominate, I'd say.
Bronn, thank you for putting this on, I'd also like to thank all of the award recipients this evening, it really does make a difference, and a lot of times, when someone cleans up their house, of course, these houses, I'm sure, are always clean, it seems like the neighbors will then start doing it. So, it really is one of those things that really can grow in a neighborhood, and it can really make this a better place to live. So, thank you all for taking great care of your homes. And that's all we have for Mayor's announcements and special guests this evening, we do have some legislation this evening, we have one public hearing of ordinance, the ordinance number 2017-8, Mr. McGill.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2017-8, it's an ordinance amending Chapter 1450 of the Property Maintenance Code of the Belbrook Municipal Code. Whereas the City of Belbrook has enacted Chapter 1450 of the Belbrook Municipal Code, which is entitled Property Maintenance Code, and whereas the purpose of Chapter 1450 is to protect, peace, health, safety, and welfare, the citizens of Belbrook, and whereas the city desires to amend Chapter 1450 of the Belbrook Municipal Code to allow for the assessment of civil penalties for violations of the Property Maintenance Code. Now, therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby ordains, Section 1, that the following amendments to Chapter 1450 of the Property Maintenance Code of the Belbrook Municipal Code be approved, with additions shown by italics and underlying deletions shown by strike-through in brackets. So, if it pleases Mayor and Council, I'll just read the sections that have changed and are italicized here for purposes of this discussion. The other, all other aspects of the citation remain intact, in my understanding. And Section 1450.11, notices and orders, changes include a strike-through on Item C4, which is the deletion of "and," an addition of Item 5, including a statement that civil and criminal penalties may be assessed if the repairs and improvements required are not completed by the stated date, a strike-through on Item 5, and that becomes new Number 6, and a strike-through on Number 6, which becomes new Item Number 7. The wording in those sections did not change, as far as I'm aware. Underneath, Section 1450.99, violations, legal and equitable remedies, we have additions in, after Item E, it would be new F, in addition to any other remedy or penalty provided by the Property Maintenance Code, or their pile revised code, an owner who fails to comply with the notice of violation or order served in accordance with this code may incur a civil penalty. In G, the code officials shall provide notice to the owner of a civil prop penalty in accordance with Section 1450.11, notice and orders. In H, any violation of the Property Maintenance Code that is a first offense shall be $25 per day, per offense, or $250 per offense total. In Item I, any violation of the Property Maintenance Code that is a second offense shall be $50 per day, per offense, or $500 per offense total. In J, any violation of the Property Maintenance Code that is a third vi, third offense shall be $75 per day, per offense, or $750 per offense total. In Item F, that was listed there, this has been changed to new Item K, no other items are changed by that language. And in Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period of time provided by law.
Yes, so currently, the Property Maintenance Code, when we go to enforce that, obviously, our first step is for informal resolution, we talk to the property owner, we may send them a letter informing them of what the violation is, and asking them to correct that. As that progresses on, if they do not fix the issue, the current Property Maintenance Code only allows for criminal prosecution. Obviously, there are certain cases where in a property maintenance violation, criminal prosecution is not really the best avenue, and in there are certain cases where it may be an out-of-state owner, or a corporation, or an LLC that owns a property, that you really can't criminally prosecute them anyway. So, what this allows is, another alternative to the criminal prosecution allows for the assessment of civil penalties to those properties and to those property owners. This is not intended to make money for the city, it's really just to get the attention and to hopefully get compliance with the Property Maintenance Code. So, the first offense is a $25 per day, to a maximum of $250, second offense is $50 per day, up to a maximum of 500, and third offense is $75 per day, up to a maximum of 750. So, again, this is just another tool, if these civil penalties go unpaid, we do have the ability to put a lien on the property, and ultimately, collect the money. What we're really looking for, though, is compliance with the Property Maintenance Code, and we want whatever method it takes for somebody to understand that we're serious about this, and they need to become compliant, that's what we're doing. And this allows us, again, just another tool to achieve that.
This is a public hearing, so we can start on council, if you've got any questions, concerns, I know we went through most of this stuff a couple weeks ago, but I see everyone shaking their head.
I think it, you know, to get to the fine point, you have to really ignore the whole situation, and I think, you know, by that time, you should get fined, because the city's usually pretty lenient.
I think it's a better way than criminally charging someone, and potentially having arrest warrant and all that kind of stuff out there, too, and then, of course, it's gonna be on your record unless you get it expunged. And also, the issue is, like Mark said, a lot of these are gonna be the issues we have with bank-owned homes, it's in transition, and those kinds of things, and it's really tough to be one of those neighbors when nothing, nothing's getting taken care of, and you have to live next door, so.
Yes.
So, this is a public hearing, if anyone in the audience would like to ask a question or give a comment, you have to come up, say your name, address, and you would have five minutes. I see no one jumping up, so I move, this public hearing is closed, may I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-8?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mr. McGill to adopt ordinance number 2017-8, and ordinance amending Chapter 1450, Property Maintenance Code of the Belbrook Municipal Code, seconded by Mr. Schweller. Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have no introduction of ordinances, no resolutions, we do have a city manager's report?
Yes, two items for you this evening. First, as Council well knows, we've talked about this many times, we have a property tax levy on the ballot November, it is issue number three, it is a three-mil general fund additional levy. We have provided a great deal of information on the website, we've talked about it here at council over time, but we are going to host two levy informational meetings, one is a week from tomorrow, on October 3rd, from 6:08 PM, here in council chambers, the second one is Wednesday, October 11th, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM, here in council chambers. Today, we sent out letters to all the local businesses, there are about 100 businesses on the list that we sent out inviting them specifically to this, we will notify the residents, we have it on the website, obviously, we're announcing it tonight, we're gonna put it on the sign at the fire station, if it's not up there already, it will be by tomorrow, and the Dayton Daily News has, is going to run an article, or is interested in running an article, so hopefully, we can get that included in that. We have issued a press release, so maybe a combination of those two to make people aware of it, and so they know if they have questions about the levy, they can come here and ask, we'll answer any questions that we can, and let them know what the, what the need for the levy is, and what it's going to be used for, and what we plan going forward. So, those are a week, on Tuesday, October 3rd, and Wednesday, October 11th. The other thing that I have this evening, at the last meeting, we adopted the Purple Heart, it became a Purple Heart City, I know we talked about signage at that point, in the meantime, I've gotten a couple options from them of different things we can do to add signage. I know at one point, we talked about adding it to the wagon wheel signs, there's somewhat limited space, so we can do something there, we could also do it, we could do something like this, we could do it underneath the new City of Belbrook signs, the entrance signs to the city, just didn't know if council had any preference, or any thoughts as to what they want to see, we could also do some, you know, standalone signs here, so, if you have any thoughts or preferences.
We have the toughest time on these kinds of things.
I know they suggested something, is that West Carrollton, is that what they suggested? No, they said, oh, why don't you?
Well, Sprague Row, they said had a really nice sign.
Yeah, these were just the ones that they provided to me, just different examples, but, like I said, this one, you could put underneath, again, I don't know if we wanted to track from, you know, the new signs that we put, not that, you know, do we want to focus attention off the new signs? Or, we could come up, I think, with something like this, and you could probably put it underneath on the wagon wheels, but then, I'm not sure that it's readable.
I like the circle one better with the wagon wheel, depending on the size of it, because it looks like a wagon wheel sign.
Yeah, I'm just not sure that there's enough room there, I have, I can, I can find that out, we could put that on there, I've contacted Greg Sparks to see, and they're willing to work with us.
I drove around, I didn't drive, I was driving around, I looked, and it looked like they were spotted.
Okay.
But I like the one, I think the one looks really sharp, at the top, under the signage and in.
I kinda like that idea.
Okay, two, Bob.
Yeah.
This one?
Yeah.
It says our city name, and then it says, this is.
Purple Heart City.
Yeah, so I like that one, and then we can, if we decide to move forward, I think you need to do a circle when you decide you want to do wagon wheel later.
Okay.
I like the one.
This one, under there?
Right there.
Everyone okay with that?
I'll, I'll get with Dale and see how that fits, and we probably won't, you know, we have, I don't know what the number is, we have a lot of those throughout the city, but we'll probably concentrate on the, you know, on the 725, and maybe main street areas, and not, right, the main entry points, but we'll work with them to get that, that put up there, and I think it's something that we want to make people aware of, so.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, that is all I have this evening.
Anyone have any questions for our city manager this evening?
Not mayor.
Not mayor.
Then we're moving on, committee reports, service.
No official report tonight, but I do want to remind people that it's starting to become full, and leaves are starting to fall off the trees, so please don't rake your leaves into the streets, because that blocks up all the sewers, and it's a real problem for the service department if that happens. That's it.
Safety?
No report, Mayor.
Finance and audit?
Mark, the post audit conference is now scheduled?
It is scheduled, but I was receiving questions as of today, so I'm not sure that they'll be ready for October, it's October 3rd at 8:00 AM is what it's scheduled for, so, yes, it is scheduled.
Will anxious to look forward to that.
Yes.
Is that it, Mike?
Yes.
Community affairs?
Just this, on the open house for the fire department?
Oh, absolutely.
Everybody in the city should have gotten a flyer on that, it is next Tuesday?
No, it's a two week.
Two weeks, Tuesday, October 10th, so two weeks, so, look at your flyers for the details on that.
And we'll have another meeting then, right before?
Yeah.
Yeah, Monday before we have a meeting.
And then I did want to, there's a new member breakfast that is held periodically that the township and the safety departments from both city and the township, the parks district, the school, community organizations, all have representatives. It's at the, being held in the community room at the Belbrook Methodist Church, but it's like a new neighbors kind of event, so folks who are new in town, or have been here for a while, and just really don't quite know where to go to find certain things out, or want to talk to somebody face-to-face, representatives of all those organizations will be there to talk to people, and there'll be coffee and donuts, or coffee and coffee cake available. This is about the fourth one, I think, they've scheduled, and the folks who've been there were very appreciative of having somebody that they could talk to face-to-face in an informal situation, so it's just, it's a community service kind of thing, that they want to do every once in a while, so I wanted to let folks know that it was coming up this Saturday, October 1st, 8:30 to 10.
Sort of community service related, but Halloween, it's, from now on, it's always on the 31st, is that?
Yes, unless we change it, but it will be on October 31st.
Okay. I know kids are starting to ask about it, so.
Right, yeah, no, it will be on the 31st, I'm not sure what day of the week that is, but.
Wednesday, I think it's a Wednesday.
Might be.
So, that is it with committee reports, any old business, any new business, open discussion?
Nothing, Mayor.
Nothing, sir.
Nothing, nothing? I have nothing. Anyone in the audience, this is open discussion, they have sort of the same rules of if, when we're having a public hearing, I don't, I don't see anyone jumping up. Well, good meeting this evening, does any other member on council have any other business come before us this evening?
Of none.
Seeing none, this meeting ends adjourned.